Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the Lafayette City Council Meeting for April 1st, 2025, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Beck, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Manget.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wong.
Hello.
Councilor Barnes.
Good evening.
Councilor Friedland.
Here.
Councilor Giegos.
Good evening.
Councilor Sanson.
Good evening.
And Councilor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we'll begin tonight's meeting with public input. So if you wish to address the council at this time, please grab one of these white speaker forms that you can access through the glass doors in the back at the table, complete it, and then you can pass it over to Clerk Beck here, and we can get you on the speaker list. You have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do so, and then you may also call in as well. And so tonight, we will begin with Karen Norbeck.
Karen Norbeck, 800 East Geneseo, good evening. As a member of Preserve Lafayette, I am here tonight to speak about annexation of the two properties at Baseline and 119th. The developer held a neighborhood meeting on February 27th, attended by about 125 people. When the time came for members of the public to speak, I said, "I'm from Preserve Lafayette. These properties are a top priority on the city's open space wish list and the missing piece to complete the incredible ecosystem at our eastern gateway. We support open space, and if this land is annexed for development, we will challenge the annexation at the ballot box." The room erupted in applause and cheers. Support has continued to build. We have an online petition with 634 votes at last count. The petition says, "We, the residents of Lafayette area and Boulder County, ask our leaders to work as partners to preserve the 78 acres at the northwest and southwest corners of 119th and Baseline as open space. For more than a century, Lafayette's eastern gateway has been rural land, reflecting our agricultural roots. In 2019, Lafayette, in partnership with Boulder County, took the first step to preserve that land by buying several parcels as open space. The remaining two parcels would join our existing open space lands together, creating a nature and wildlife ecosystem that stretches from Lafayette's Old Town Pond on the west to Powers Marsh on the east. That's why this land is a top priority in the city's parks and open space acquisition plan. These parcels are also designated as agricultural lands of national importance in Boulder County's comprehensive plan. However, despite their ecological significance, these parcels are currently targeted for a dense development project. This will have major impacts on residents of Lafayette area and Boulder County. We oppose annexation and rezoning of this land for development and support acquisition of this land for open space to remain rural and undeveloped for centuries to come. Thank you."
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Kyla Robertson.
Hello, Kyla Robertson, 1201 Spencer Place. I'm here with my husband, Taylor Thompson, and we'd like to express our opinion on the annexation of the property located at 119th and Baseline, as well as for HB 241313. We do not support the annexation of this property as we're very concerned for the impact development would have on the environment and wildlife, as well as the citizens who use the trails located in and around this area, ourselves included. Relatedly, we do not support HB 241313, which seeks to increase development in Lafayette more broadly, for the same reasons. Thank you.
First, thank you. Okay, next up, we have Miranda Fan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miranda Fan. I live at 2485 Blue Heron Circle. I'm speaking tonight as both a resident and the Sustainability and Resilience Advisory Board Member who proposed this Food Waste Prevention Week proclamation for the city. This might sound like a familiar scenario to some of you. You spend your evening cooking a healthy meal for your kids after a long day, and what happens? They take one bite, make a face, spit it out, and refuse to touch the rest of it. It's frustrating. It's not just about the time you spent planning, shopping, cooking, and cleaning up. You've also used water, electricity, and gas in the process. But also think about what went into those ingredients before they even reached your home. That spinach you tried to hide in the lasagna, the pasta, the ground beef, the tomatoes and cheese, and the herbs in the jar of sauce. Even if you don't have little mouths in your home to feed, think about how often you've thrown away food that you bought or cooked. Sprouting potatoes, limp carrots, extra rice, smelly milk, moldy bread, berries, or yogurt. Each one of those has a whole journey behind it. Farms requiring land and water, fertilizers and pesticides, machines and workers harvesting, packaging, shipping, refrigeration, and fossil fuels power practically every step. Most of us don't hunt or grow our own food anymore, so we've lost touch with what our food really costs, not just in dollars and labor, but to our planet. We walk into a grocery store, and we see shelves stocked with foods from everywhere, making it seem like resources are endless. But that's not really the case, is it? The environmental price tag is just hidden from view. When people ask, "What can I personally do about climate change?" Let's be honest, what they're really asking is, "What can I do that won't cost me too much or change my lifestyle too dramatically?" Well, here's something surprising. Most food waste happens right in our homes, about 40% to 50%, which is even more than in restaurants and grocery stores combined. And get this, households with more education, higher incomes, and younger people tend to waste more food. Even for those unconcerned about climate change, preventing food waste makes financial sense. The typical household can save $1,500 to $1,800 annually by reducing waste. Multiply that by 18 years, and you can pay for the first year of your child's tuition at a pretty decent college. So what can we do? Plan your meals so you're not buying too much. Those bulk deals at Costco are only a bargain if you use everything before it goes bad. And those best buy, used by, and sell by dates, most people mistakenly believe that it's an indication of food that's gone bad, but it's not. And when all else fails, composting might seem a bit messy and smelly, but it's far better than having that food meant for consumption go to generate methane in our landfills. So thank you, council members, for your leadership and commitment to a sustainable Lafayette, and I hope that together we can make a meaningful difference in our community and beyond.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Amy Heinrich.
Hi, I'm Amy. I live at 504 Elm, and I'm here to speak about the piece of land that's to be annexed or not by the city. I'm in favor of us obtaining it as open space. I live nearby. And the pieces of land that connect around it are so ecologically diverse and useful, and this is a big swath right down the middle. It's visible to the public up and down Baseline. I think it'd be an excellent purchase for the city. I think it's actually vital to that marsh right there, because if it develops, there's going to be stuff that's going to drain downhill into it. It's going to wreck that marsh. I know you've heard how important that is. You've all seen it. You drive down, it's that flag drive. It's all the cattails, little weird place they used to carve the tree stumps. Okay, all around it is wetland, and it's kind of rare around here, if we're a dry place. So I'm in favor of the city obtaining it. I felt compelled to actually come here to say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Stuart Langley.
Hello, council. Stuart Langley, 2437 Lexington. It will surprise you that I wanted to talk today about annexation. There's two issues that I wanted to bring up, although you're facing quite a few. Lafayette Gateway is, in addition to things that have been said already, it makes no sense for that land to be anything but open space. To call it a gateway when built out with any level of density coming in from Broomfield, that will not be a gateway. It will be a walled city that people will look at coming into Lafayette. I know that there's a lot of challenges with that land, but encourage you to acquire it when possible. Certainly don't annex it. Second, the land, it's Boulder Creek homeowners? Yeah, Boulder Creek town or homes. It's on Arapaho, just east of 95th. Two lots, relatively small development, opens onto Arapaho. This makes no sense either from the lifestyle of the people living there. Arapaho is full. Arapaho's overfull. The CO7 Boulder to Brighton Project, years out, will widen Arapaho. The current plan is to widen that almost double or more the size that it is today. Then, Arapaho might be able to handle some of the development. We already have silo. Perhaps the Lafayette marketplace adding traffic, adding tens or hundreds of new homes onto Arapaho is crazy. And I would urge council to have just simply a moratorium on annexation for residential development on Arapaho until Colorado 7 is at the very least, well, the plans are more finalized and funded. So with those two things out of the way, congratulations to all of you on being on council at a very interesting time in Lafayette's history. Good luck. The council has addressed these issues with integrity and thoughtfulness in the past. This is, in 20 years, we'll be looking back at the next few months as defining a lot of what Lafayette is, and it's your legacy that we will look back on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm not seeing any more speaker forums, but I'm assuming we have a couple more. So if you wouldn't mind bringing that over, Clerk Beck, let me get on the list, and I think if any other folks are interested in speaking, you know, please make sure you secure one of these white forms out the glass doors in the back, and we can get you on the list. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Larrie Wilcox. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Larrie Wilcox. I'm at 209 East Cleveland Street in Old Town, and I want to address infilling. By definition, it's buildings constructed to occupy the space between existing ones. The town has a few old houses and plenty of recent infill. Infilling would be developing the old Lafayette florist greenhouses or the closed king supers. The developers stretched the truth to us at an earlier meeting to try to appeal to our values. However, developing so many acres of open space is not infilling. It is taking away wildlife homes, land that can grow food, mowing down plants that provide oxygen for all of us and food for wildlife, creating heat sinks full of concrete and asphalt, and so much more damage. I oppose this development because I would like to keep our open space and have less urban sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that it for the in-person speakers? All right, looks like we do have one online caller. So online caller with a phone number ending in 787. Talking is now permitted for you, and you may speak when you are ready.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. My name is Alexandra Davis. I live at 1296 Park Ridge Road, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak tonight. I agree with many of the speakers that I've heard. First, in what a great council you all are, and how hard you work to protect our city and to do what's right for the city as a whole. I'm calling in to speak out against the annexation and development, primarily because, so I work in water resources, and I've been in water resources in Colorado for 30 years. And as many people might know or be aware of, we are aridifying in the state of Colorado, and water is becoming more and more difficult to, not only are new supplies becoming more difficult to obtain, but existing supplies will be decreasing over the next decade. Plus, we will see less water availability than we have in the past. And land can always be built on. That decision to say yes can always be made in the future, but it can't be undone as easily as it can be deferred. So I would urge the city to wait on development and to see how natural resources and how climate change comes to bear, and give the city some breathing room and flexibility because you can revisit this question in the future and not make a decision that cannot be undone later. But I love the idea of the city acquiring the land for open space. I think if that opportunity arises, that would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, so not seeing any more in-person speakers or online callers. So with that, we will close public input and move forward with our consent agenda. We have several items, including Item A, March 18, 2025, City Council Mini-Minutes; Item B, March 2024, 2025, City Council Workshop Summary; Item C, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5, Series 25, Amending Chapter 6, Administrative Departments of the Code of Ordinances to authorize the city administrator to establish, combine, reorganize, and abolish the administrative departments of the city; Item D, Resolution Number 2025-21, approving the Fourth Amendment to send our subdivision filing number one development agreement; Item E, contract with Rock Soul Consulting on Call Engineering Services; and Item F, Change Order Number One with JVA Incorporated on Call Engineering Services. Are there any items that council would like to pull? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Great. All right, so that brings us to our presentations. We have one presentation tonight. This is Item G for the 2025 Capital Bond Exploration Polling Content. And we have Alex Nelson here, Assistant to the City Manager. Let's get us started.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. As mentioned, I'm here tonight to provide a brief presentation regarding the 2025 Capital Bond Exploration Poll, and I'm also joined by Ryan Winger with Magellan Strategies, who is the firm that is conducting the poll for the city. Council's had a number of touchpoints with this project already this year, so we'll begin with just a brief background on the project, turn it over to Ryan to talk through the draft poll itself, and then wrap up with next steps and discussion with council. So as you're aware, at the start of this year, the city is undergoing a capital bond exploration project, looking at three projects. It would include a renovation and expansion of the Burger Recreation Center, construction of a new civic center, and renovation and expansion of our service center. Staff came to council at the January workshop to introduce these projects and provide some preliminary information, and then returned in February to provide additional project information, preliminary financials, as well as a draft community engagement approach, which was really focused on two phases. In the first phase of that engagement approach included not only engagement with community to understand priorities and desires for these projects, but as well as a statistically significant and valid poll, which is what we're here to discuss this evening. So to kind of ground ourselves in these activities before turning it over to Ryan, there's a lot of moving point with this, and starting this week is a pretty big week for those projects, and we're kicking off our engagement with a community meeting tomorrow night, and we'll continue those through early May, as well as doing polling in tandem with that. And then staff will return at the end of May at your workshop, turn findings, and discuss next steps with council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan with Magellan Strategies to walk through the poll for you.
Thanks, Alex, and thank you all for your time tonight. We're looking forward to kicking off another survey project for the city. So just here tonight to provide a little bit of background about the company, and then just provide you a little bit of information about how the survey process will work. So about Magellan, we are a public opinion research firm based in Broomfield. It specializes in measuring and understanding resident, and in this case, voter opinion, for Colorado local government, school districts, special district districts, et cetera. Since 2007, we managed hundreds of projects like this, where we're specifically measuring support for ballot measures. In 2021, we managed a project related to the public safety and mental health ballot measure that ultimately became ballot measures B and 2C, and accurately projected the results of those measures within one point of the actual outcome. We also conducted polling for the city in 2023, and some of our other Boulder-area clients include the cities of Boulder, Lewisville, Broomfield, Brighton, towns of Erie and Mead, and we also manage survey projects for Boulder Valley School District and Adams 12, Five Star Schools. The first thing I want to just kind of touch on as we talk about how the survey will work is just an introduction to the demographics of the city of Lafayette. So you see here a lot of numbers, right? You see there on the left side, the voter registration for the city on important demographics like gender, age range, and party affiliation. The reason these are important to know is that when we conduct the survey, we want to ensure that the survey results accurately reflect the community that we are working in, right? And so you'll see that, and we also have to accurately reflect who's likely to vote in an upcoming election, though we don't know for sure who's going to vote. We can have a pretty good guess based upon past elections, and so that's why the red box is around 2023. That's the last comparable election, what we expect this year. And you'll see really the big difference between a year like 2023, an odd year election, and some like last year's general election, where a presidential election is really driving interest, is that turnout is quite a bit older, right? You have over, just at 50% of voters, we anticipate to be over the age of 55, whereas in a year like 2024, that's going to be closer to 40, not 50%. Again, just trying to be clear, transparent, and how the process is going to work, and how the survey data will ultimately be weighted as we try to predict what turnout's going to look like. As far as our methodology, here's an example of a text message that will go out to approximately a sample of 12,000 voters within the city of Lafayette, inviting them, again, with the city logo, a welcoming message to say, "We really want to hear from you. Please participate in this important survey." Following that initial message, there'll be at least two reminders that will get sent to voters, and the survey will also be bilingual, can be taken in English or Spanish, and the results are going to be weighted to accurately reflect those demographics that we just talked about. So what are the goals of the survey? For something like this, pretty straightforward. Obviously, the primary goal is we're trying to measure voter support for two different, in this case, potential revenue sources to support debt financing for capital projects, and increase sales tax being one option, the sales and use tax, and a property tax for mill levy. And we always kind of use those terms in tandem. When you say mill levy, a lot of respondents don't necessarily know what that's referring to, right? So we are taking both options in order to just provide a comprehensive measurement of voter opinion. And then respondents will be given information on the needs related to the three projects, which in this case are Bob Elburger Rec Center, a new civic center, and a city service center, renovation and expansion. In addition, they'll have an opportunity to identify which of those projects are most important to them. So here's how the survey works from a formatting standpoint. At the beginning of the survey, they'll be asked benchmark questions, really, about the city's performance, fiscal responsibility, perception of financial resources. Those questions serve as a good breaker, but they're also important to ask because they shed light on voter opinion that may not be directly related to the ballot language itself. So someone may be bringing a thought about the city that isn't related to the specifics of the ballot measure, and we need to know how exactly that interplays with their beliefs about the ballot language. So that's followed by the draft ballot language, and again, try to mirror what they would see on the ballot. In rare cases, we have to kind of paraphrase what it's going to say, and we find that that doesn't work anywhere near as well as trying to match, hey, here's the language in all its ugliness, right? Because that's what they're going to see on the ballot. They're then going to be given information about the needs related to each project, and then they're actually going to read the ballot language again and saying, you know, basically attempting to measure knowing what you know now, trying to see where movement happens. And then finally, at the end of the survey, they'll be given an opportunity to choose which group of projects they're most likely to support. So they'll have an option to say, all three, just two of the three, and identify which two, just one, or none of the projects. And with that, I will turn it back over to Alex.
Thank you, Ryan. So before turning it over to council to see if there are any questions about the survey, which, for your information, was included, the whole entire draft survey was included in your packet along with the memo. Based on the discussions tonight, Magellan will revise the survey if needed and then begin polling this month. As mentioned, we will engage in a number of community engagement activities, starting this week, returning at the end of the month to discuss financial responsibility, and then concluding with the discussion on May 15th to talk about the sustainability and environmental stewardship related to these projects. In addition to those community meetings, we're going to have boards at each, at most facilities. So they'll be here at City Hall, at the Ration Center, the Library and Senior Center with project information, as well as links to our new project website that has all the project information we have available, as well- well as a survey that will be live this week. And then we'll return at the end of May to present findings from both the engagement and then the polling that are happening, and have next steps, discussions with council. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor and see if there are any questions from council.
Great. Well, thank you for that presentation. Yeah, we'll see if there's first any questions or comments from council for either staff or Magellan. Counselor, please.
How long do you think that this particular survey takes?
Yeah, you want me to just come stand up here?
Yes.
So, yeah, this survey, we're estimating to take about 10 to 12 minutes. And you'll really be surprised. I mean, we get that question a lot because obviously, if it's just some kind of random issue coming out of left field, like no one's going to sit there and take it for 10 to 12 minutes. What we found is that when we are working at the low goal levels here, and especially when we introduce the idea that, you know, there's a potential tax increase, it really does increase engagement, and you'd be surprised how long folks will sit with it. But yeah, that's a very common question.
And then do they, I noticed on some of these, when they're asking about ethnicity and race, do they have the option to say, it doesn't say it here, prefer not to answer?
Typically, on the demographic questions where we're trying to weigh the results to match the city's population, we don't like to have a prefer not to say option because anytime you have it, a significant number of folks are going to choose it, and it kind of messes with the ability to weigh the results. But we were open to including that if there's a real strong desire from the city to give them that prefer not to say option. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments? Counselor Tapia Vega?
Two questions from me. The first one is just in terms of accessibility. I know there will be a paper survey available to anyone who requests one. What's the turnaround on that? I know it can't be immediately, but if I were to request a paper survey, how does that get to me? How long does that take to get to me?
Yeah, so typically, I mean, we can do it any number of ways, however staff wants to handle it. We could, there's going to have to be a certain place where they're going to pick it up, right? Probably here makes sense. So when they call and request it, then you can say, yep, we have a paper survey ready for you here. So sometimes we'll have clients that'll pre-print 20, 25 of them and just have them sitting. Other times, they don't want to print them until they're requested, but obviously, you know, the survey doesn't take that long to print. So, yeah, what I would recommend is, you know, as soon as someone requests it, they should be able to get it very quickly. It shouldn't be a super arduous process to get it.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you. So the question is just about a word in here. It's a survey to be offered in English, maybe Spanish?
Does it say maybe?
It says maybe.
Yeah, so it will be in Spanish. Oh, does it say that in the draft?
It does.
Yeah, yeah. So that shouldn't say maybe. It will be available in Spanish. And really, the text message will have a line that says, if you prefer to take the survey in Spanish, it'll take them to a completely different Spanish language, Spanish optimized version of the survey.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. On those statistics, the chart with all the numbers on it?
Sure.
No, I'm seeing a lot of activity, people like really engaged in what public protest and whatnot right now, just having their voices heard.
Yep.
Do you, historically, is there any correlation between public activity and voter turnout you see, and is there a certain age range where you expect that? And do you maybe expect it this year?
Sure.
Or is it pretty much going to follow the trends?
No, that's a really valid question. I mean, obviously, a lot of the interest that's being generated right now is driving from the federal level, right? And what's actually going to be on the ballot for voters who live in the city of Lafayette isn't necessarily related to the federal level. But I just do think, in general, it doesn't hurt to have that kind of like civic awakening a little bit. So you're right, we could see a little bit higher turnout among that younger age group, because that's really, like, that's really the difference between odd year and eventual year, is the younger people don't show up.
Right.
Right? And so if there is just kind of that groundswell that is happening a little bit, certainly, we could see the numbers bump up a little bit, although I certainly wouldn't anticipate them matching, you know, the levels from last year, but maybe creeping up a little bit. I do think that's certainly possible.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Counselor Stabs?
Thank you, because this just prompted me. So we believe that the state is going to put something on the ballot about the free and reduced lunch, or free lunches and breakfast for kids. Is there something in here where you add a question that says, should there be other questions on increases and taxes? Does that affect your answers here?
Sure, yeah. I mean, we do that kind of stuff all the time. Sometimes we note specifically to call something out specifically, like if we're working for a school district, but the city is also going for a tax increase, we'll mention it specifically. Sometimes we keep it general and just say, if there were other tax increases on the ballot, how would that affect your vote? So, yeah, we could certainly add that at a statewide level, or if there's anything at a county-wide level that you all are relatively sure is going to be on the ballot. Because, yeah, it does. I mean, that, a lot of our clients were affected by that last year because they had to read through the longest ballot in the history of Colorado before they even got to their local, you know, ballot questions. And there is not just a tax fatigue, but just a general, you know, fatigue from reading the ballot, to be quite honest with you. So those things, you know, they're not determinative, but they do have some kind of impact.
Sure. I would like something.
Do you recommend something?
Well, I'm fine even if it's general. As you suggested, something that says, if there are other ballot issues that would increase taxes, does that change your answers?
Right.
I think that's good enough at this point, since we don't know what ballot language will be from the county or the state.
Yeah, usually, we would put that as kind of at the very end of the survey, just as a, not an afterthought, but just kind of, how does it change how you're viewing all of these things?
Yeah. Yeah, because my concern would be if we have something that's very close, and then we're trying to make a decision, and then that question comes up, that could actually change our confidence level.
All right. Go ahead, Counselor Barnes.
So I wasn't clear if we were going to provide the choose not to disclose if there, are we talking about that, or?
I didn't, I was more curious as to why. I can go your way. As long as people, I think, felt okay to speak up and say something like, okay, you didn't give me this option, but I don't want to answer it, I think they should feel comfortable saying that. I just don't know how many people do. I mean, I can't, I'm fine. I always would say that. But I don't know how the rest of the community feels. So if you all have opinions.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you all, but I think as long as folks, if there's an opportunity available, wherever, in the end, I think we'll be all right. Like, I don't necessarily need to recommend specific language around it, but keep it in.
This was, I think that his question was, I brought up the issue of under race, it says prefer not, it doesn't say prefer not to answer, yet it does in some of the other questions.
Right.
And what was stated tonight was, the reason they don't put that down is if they, if they verbalize that, a good portion of the people will, that are taking the survey, will say, I prefer not to answer. And yet, what they are trying to get is data that shows that we are getting a good representation of the Lafayette community.
Right.
So that's the reason why they didn't want to do prefer not to, that's why they didn't put that in.
And I guess what I'm a little bit confused is, then, are we, are you suggesting that we remove that option or change it somehow, or keep it the way it is?
Counselor Barnes was...
I was wondering if they would, if we, how everyone feels about providing the option to say a choose not to say, in which case you are. So I was just asking if we're providing that.
Right. Like I said, it's not, it's not uncommon. There are times where we add prefer not to say. We just never start with it, because like I said, it's usually in the ballpark of 15 to 20% will say prefer not to say. And if you gave them that option on any of the demographic questions, say, well, she's going to say prefer not to say, they don't get to know, right? And so, but there is a smaller group that I'm sure, like, really doesn't feel comfortable answering that question. And those are the people that you want to make sure that their voices are heard.
Yep.
So in that case, I would recommend just adding it if there's any concern. It's just as simple as adding an option at the bottom of the list that says prefer not to say.
So I guess that's a question for councils. Are we okay with that, adding that option? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Any other pieces of feedback or questions on the survey? Well, yeah, we're really excited to see the results of this. I think it'll really impact our decision, of course. Like, we definitely want to hear from the folks, especially for something as big as this. And so folks that are here in the audience, watching at home, please do your best to engage as much as you can with any feedback that you have on the potential bond measures. It'd be super helpful for our decision-making later on, this year or next year. And is that all?
That's all.
Great. All right. Thank you so much for hanging out with us tonight. We really appreciate it. All right. That brings us to some fun stuff, some proclamations tonight. We have lots of proclamations. There's a lot to celebrate here in April. And we will begin with the first proclamation. This is item H for National Library Week, taking place from April 6th through the 12th, 2025. Counselor Gallegos.
Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a public space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas. And whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books in both print and digital formats, and innovative programming and events, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of backgrounds, have access to tools needed to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, community organizations, making connections which maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytime, maker programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of reading, learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas libraries protect our right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare April 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the Lafayette Public Library, explore its resources, and celebrate all of the ways that it builds community. So moved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or words for this proclamation? Counselor Samson?
I just want to thank all the staff that work at the library, and then all the volunteers that help at the library. It's a big, it's a big job to try to take care of everything. And also, you have to deal with my daughter, who comes every week and asks you questions. So I want to thank you, for all of you. And the, I will say, she comes home every week from the library and says, I've got the greatest book ever. And I know that reading is the gateway to so many other things. So I really, really want to appreciate everyone that works and volunteers at the library, because that wonderful asset in our community would not happen without you.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to say something, Counselor?
Always, you have to. And I'd have to say, yes, that little person is dense. And thank goodness, we do have a library, an incredible library. And I would like to thank all of the staff, and even reflect upon when we were in the middle of COVID and had everything shut down, the one group of city employees who were like, we need to get open, it was the library staff. They were chomping at the bit to get open. They said, we serve the public, and there are members that we need to serve who can't get in here. What can we do to get this library back open? So they are very committed to our community. I deeply appreciate their commitment, the community spaces that are available, the maker space that's there with 3D printers. There's incredible game space that's in there, there's study areas. And something that I appreciate, I know a lot of people who do speech debate, and research skills are imperative, and you don't always get those, but you can do your own research at the library, you can ask the librarians for assistance to figure out how to get your own information. And there's something called, I think it's AI, artificial intelligence. So that is artificial. If you really want to dig deep into what's been written by people, not by a collection of servers somewhere, go there, confirm what you see in your AI, make sure that it's actually real, what you've seen. Learn research skills, get to your library. It's an amazing library, and I'm super proud of everything that they do. Thank you, Mayor.
And then I'll just quickly add, you know, I grew up in Lafayette, as some of you know, and didn't have, you know, grew up pretty, very low income, without a lot of resources. And what the library did provide for us, for my sister and I growing up, is they had several, like, reading challenges, you know, read X amount of books during the summer, and then in exchange, you're rewarded. And sometimes those were tickets to, like, Lakeside Amusement Park or other places to visit as kids. And my mom would always send there because she knew that it was free, right? It's like, when you don't have the resources at home, you, she, you look for it. And I asked my mom, I was like, how did, like, we go to all these places when we were younger? And she was like, I look for free, like, whatever was free. Like, we were, you know, Wow Museum or other places in the community that were low, that were cheap or free to attend. And I was like, oh, so that's how we got to go to all those places when we were younger, is because of programs, like the library houses there. And so I sincerely appreciate all the work that you all do there. And with that, you know, we do have a motion and a second for National Library Week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Several more things to celebrate tonight. The next several proclamations are in relation to environmental stewardship, beginning with the mayor's monarch pledge that we've been doing for a few years here. I do have that one in front of me, and so I'd be happy to read this one in. Mayor's Monarch Pledge, April 1st, 2025. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multigenerational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen significant decline, with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. Whereas Lafayette recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems in the biofood production, healthy soil, and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and Lafayette is striving to become a leader. And whereas on April 1st, I, J.D. Mangat, signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly. And whereas every resident of Lafayette can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas Lafayette has committed to continuing to enhancing the, enhancing and preserving native landscapes with an emphasis on improved habitat and increased food sources for wildlife, as well as educating the public about wildlife conservation. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare April 1st, 2025, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support this and celebrate the monarch conservation. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? Counselor Freeman?
Yeah. One of the things I did want to say that, you know, I think we as a community have done an admirable job of supporting pollinators the last few years, including this pledge, other activities like the pollinator district that we're talking about and working through. And I just was trying to quickly look up numbers around, like, how are we doing with monarch butterflies? And some good news in the last, March 6th, this was posted of 2025, so very, very recent, that one of their wintering habitats, they saw like an increase, almost a 100% increase in the amount, basically, the area that they covered monarch butterflies while they winter. So we're not out of the woods, but, you know, I think we're all, we're trying, and I encourage others to take direction of our community and keep at. So thank you very much.
First, thank you. Other comments? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't say enough about how we are, it's imperative upon us to take care of our ecosystem, and pollinators are a key piece of that. As a pollinator city, we can support our entire community and ecosystem through that process. And it's, they're stressed worldwide. The global ecosystem is under a lot of pressure. We're forcing a lot of that on our ecosystem, but it's very resilient. And I think if we help the pollinators, and specifically the monarch, that is one thing we can do. As we've heard earlier, there are simple things we can do in our community, but it makes a really big difference. So I would, I'm very happy that we have the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And I think we should, we're all, we're all very, very proud of the fact that we take care of our ecosystem here. So, thank you.
George, and thank you for sharing this opportunity with me. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That proclamation passes unanimously. And we can move forward with our next proclamation. This is on Food Waste Prevention Week for April 7th through the 13th, 2025. Counselor Friedman?
Thank you very much. Food Waste Prevention Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2025. Whereas food waste is a critical global issue with an estimated one-third of all food produced going uneaten, resulting in unnecessary waste of natural resources and contributing to environmental challenges. And whereas food waste in landfills produces methane, a greenhouse gas that is over 25 times more potent than carbon dioxide, trapping heat in the atmosphere over a 100-year period significantly contributing to climate change. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity. And whereas reducing food waste represents an impactful opportunity to address food insecurity in our community, as edible food can be redirected to food banks and meal programs serving those in need. And whereas the average American family loses approximately $1,500 per year on wasted food, creating an unnecessary financial burden on households. And whereas local businesses, including restaurants, grocery stores, and food service providers can benefit from implementing food waste reduction strategies. And whereas education and awareness about food waste prevention can help residents make informed decisions about food purchasing, storage, and consumption. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as Food Waste Prevention Week, and encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to actively participate in efforts to reduce food waste by planning meals, storing food properly, composting, and donating surplus food to those in need. So moved.
Thank you. Are there any comments or discussion on this? Oh, I apologize. We'll take a second, please.
Second.
All right. Now, are there any comments or discussion on this proclamation?
Okay, I'll go first this time. Thank you, Mayor. I can't say enough of, again, about what we can do. And our Sustainability and Resilience Advisory Board has come to make this point. Again, it's something we can do that is within our reach, and it's important. Methane is 80 times more warming than carbon dioxide, which is much more bountiful and lasts a lot longer. But methane could exacerbate some of the issues that we have. And we can control this piece. The carbon dioxide piece is very hard to get hold of. We're still struggling with that one. But we can take methane into our own hands. There are landfills that draw it off of the bottom. We can do a lot about that. We had a Waste Reduction Advisory Committee, and it's wrapped into the Sustainability and Resilience Advisory Board. So we have got, we're getting this. And with help from the public, we can continue to manage this bit and piece. And I think it's super important, because just like the stress on the monarchs, heat is one of those things that forces our ecosystem. And there's a heat island effect from methane. So having methane accumulated in our, in our community is problematic. We can do this. And I'm super proud yet again to say that our advisory board is giving us the details that we need. I had no idea that there were so much food waste at home. And it pains me to see anyone eating food. So let's not waste anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Friedman?
Yeah, I mean, what else to add? I'm not sure. I think, yeah, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate Miranda from Esrev coming and sharing with us those great thoughts during public comment, too. I think food waste especially is really interesting to me because it really hits right. Obviously, it's a climate strategy, for sure, methane, we can talk about that. But also, you know, donating food is another opportunity to support those in our community in need, saving money through not wasting food, right? It hits all these different buckets. It's not just, you know, an environmental strategy, but it's certainly a powerful one. And a lot of times, you know, when I talk to people about recycling and other things, and food waste prevention is one of those things, you can say, right, it's kind of the gateway drug to sustainability. It's hard, it's hard to know what to do when it comes to renewable energy or something like, those can feel like really challenging things to do. But if you just say, I'm going to figure out a way to not, you know, waste all these groceries that I just bought, and a little bit less than last month, right? That's something, that's really tangible, an action that you can do. And it helps your family, and it helps the community, and it helps the world. So just, this is a great one. And I'm really proud of our community for leading on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we did have a motion and a second on that proclamation. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. That brings us to our next proclamation. This is on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2025. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. April 22nd, Earth Day. Whereas Earth, the first Earth Day was celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, to inspire environmental awareness and encourage conservation, protection, and appreciation of our rich and diverse natural resources. And whereas Earth Day offers the Lafayette community an opportunity to make, renew, and celebrate commitments to each other and to future generations that will protect and improve the quality of life on Earth for generations to come. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment and economic growth and opportunity. And whereas inclusive outreach, engagement, and representation are crucial to ensure sustainability and resilience efforts are equitable and consistent with Lafayette climate action goals and policy. And whereas we are caretakers of our planet, and a sustainable environment can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and it is the responsibility of each of us to safeguard our environment and resources. And the city of Lafayette gladly supports the ongoing works of our, work of our Sustainability Division and the Sustainability and Resilience Advisory Board. And whereas the city of Lafayette is hosting the annual Earth Day Every Day celebration on April 26th, 2025, from, well, it's not in here. And encourage all community members to join in celebration at that event, or other events, programs, and celebrations throughout April. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare April 22nd, 2025, to be Earth Day, and encourage all residents and staff to learn more, take individual action, and work together to protect and preserve our air, land, and water, and each person's right to a healthy environment. So moved.
Second.
Right. Motion and a second. Any comments or question on this?
I can go first.
Yeah.
You know, adding on some of the other things that we've already talked about, and I would say that this one is especially interesting to me and feels, adds a lot of connectivity, I think, to the work that we do in that, you know, it's been going on for years and years and years, right? And so feeling that connectivity to those who came before us is really important, especially in this way. And also those around the world who are celebrating in the same way. So I just appreciate that connectivity that it brings, where you do feel like you're part of a community. I think that it's especially important when we're faced with these really challenging realities, to have those that we feel like connected to. So, thank you.
First, Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. The other events, I do want to make sure that if you are interested in going to the high, sorry, Hard to Recycle event, April 19, you do have to pre-register for that. So make sure you get that. I registered. And there's still some slots open, but make sure you register online to attend that. And I will be one of the people staffing Earth Day Every Day, and I'm bringing in some scientists, maybe in costumes, to support and answer any questions about, how do we know all these different things? And how do you do those experiments? I'm looking forward to staffing that bit and piece. And I'm going to just tack on to that, El Cielo y la Tierra mural celebration, which is on the 19th as well, from 11:00 to noon, to celebrate the mural that I think attaches our community to all of these qualities that we're mentioning. Like, how do we know a lot about the Earth and the planet? So just outside of Senior Gomez, from 11:00 to 12:00. Well, and you've probably seen the mural if you've driven on public road, ever. So yes, there's a postcard right there for it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, that's all. We do have a motion and a second on that proclamation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. This proclamation for environmental stewardship is for Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025. Mayor Pro Tim Wong.
Yes. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2025, the 153rd anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas 2025 is the 30th anniversary of Arbor Day in the city of Lafayette, and will be celebrated at the April 26th Earth Day Every Day event. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, food for our plates, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare April 25th, 2025, as the 30th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day in the city of Lafayette, and encourage all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and urban forests. So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion on this one? Okay, Counselor Friedman?
My favorite meeting of ours last year was when we talked about the trees that we were planting over the planting season. I think we're planting some more this year, so I'm equally excited about those as well. But that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will say, trees are such an answer to all of the challenges that we have. On the drawdown side of how do we bring carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, not just young trees that are growing, but old growth trees have that knowledge. They can pull down, continue to pull down CO2 out of the atmosphere. Planting more trees is only going, in the proper way, is only going to benefit us. And in the, as mentioned earlier, with the increasing dryness and heat that we are expecting to see on this planet, trees can reduce the temperature 10 to 15 degrees. So if we're talking about sustainability and, you know, enjoying our environment, trees can provide that candy. Like, we're adding trees, and they're one of the sources of not just helping us, but as was mentioned, the ecosystem and all that. And the roots that are sending communication to the ground. So trees are one of the most amazing, and I'm proud again that we're a tree city, one of the most amazing ways that we can, again, do something to support the quality of life for everyone here in our ecosystem and health. Thank you.
All right. If that's all, then we can move forward with a vote here. We do have a motion and a second proclamation. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That proclamation passes unanimously. Which brings us to our final proclamation for tonight. This is item J on Kids' Day America, May 17th, 2025. Counselor Sampson?
Whereas the health and well-being of children is our responsibility. And whereas the safety of our children is a significant concern for parents, community leaders, and health caregivers. And whereas the environmental welfare is of universal concern and deserves the utmost attention. And whereas if studied in childhood, proper health, safety, and environmental habits can be maintained for a lifetime, producing a valued member of society and enhancing our community. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare May 17th, 2025, as Kids' Day America in Lafayette, Colorado, and urge that this day be dedicated to the efforts of all doctors and healthcare practitioners in helping educate all residents on the importance of health, safety, and environmental issues affecting our community. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I do believe we do have someone, Michelle here? Okay. Michelle, if you wouldn't mind coming up, we do have Michelle Green here. She's responsible for organizing today throughout, many areas throughout the country, and will be hosting an event here in Lafayette, I believe. This is taking place in May. Not enabled, we wanted to make sure we had enough time to get the word out, you know, spread, advertise the event here, to make sure we have as much folks participating as possible, which is why we're doing it here in April. But I did want to turn the mic over to you, Michelle, if you had any comments on this proclamation, on your upcoming event.
Thank you. Yes. So my name is Dr. Michelle Green. I'm a mom of two small children, and I'm a business owner here in Lafayette. I own a small chiropractic office doing network spinal, which is a very light-touch, gentle, safe, effective technique. Kids' Day is a day empowering our youth for safety, health, and environmental awareness. This year, it's on May 17th. It's a day that's been celebrated in many towns over the country for the last 30 years, and I'm really excited to bring it to Lafayette this year. The Lafayette Police Department and Fire Department have committed to being part of this event. They're going to be there, showing off their trucks and their cars and handing out stickers. We're going to have food trucks and bounce houses, and various opportunities for kiddos to learn about health, safety, and environmental awareness. And we're going to have different organizations there promoting and talking about like how to be environmentally aware in safety and health issues. This event is free. We will be supporting a nonprofit called Colorado Feeding Kids, so helping kids who might need help with different nutritional needs. And this event is going to be on the lot off of 287 and South Boulder Road. Catch the Fire Church has generously donated their lot to have this event at, which is exciting. And if you want to learn more, you can go to kidstdaylafayette.com. And if you want to be part of the volunteer team or help out, I would love that. This is the first year we're doing that. So I hope to do it every year and make it bigger and better for our community. You can email me at hello@kidstdaylafayette.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to see if there are any questions for Michelle while she's here from council? Did you have something, Counselor Barnes?
Yes. What was the date again?
May 17th.
May 17th. And that, what day of the week is that?
Saturday.
Okay.
It will be from 11:00 to 2:00.
11 to 2:00. Great. All right. Well, hopefully, we can get the word out about that event and get as many folks there as possible. Really appreciate you hanging out with us tonight, this evening. And then I'll try to get, email you over a copy of that proclamation when we get it all signed.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Well, that, we do, we do have to vote on this proclamation as well. So we did have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That proclamation passes as well. All right. Well, thinking of my seven years of council, I've never seen that many proclamations in one night, but that's awesome. That means we have a lot of great things to celebrate. So thank you all. That does bring us to regular business. We have a couple items tonight, beginning with item K. This is Resolution Number 2025-19, finding, finding the annexation petition for properties generally located at the northwest, southwest of the intersection of Baseline Road and North 119th Street to be substantial, in substantial compliance, sitting a public hearing on the petition, and initiating annexation proceedings for the Gateway Lafayette annexation in accordance with the Magnusque Annexation Act of 1965. We have our planning manager here. Thank you so much for hanging out with us. And to get us started.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Council members. As you said, we are here to discuss the substantial compliance determination for the Gateway at Lafayette annexation, southwest and northwest corner of Baseline Road and North 119th. Sorry. All right. Skipping over. So a member of Cairoi, a representative of Cairoi is in attendance. However, this isn't a public hearing, so they will not be speaking. I will give a brief presentation, followed by questions, and then discussion and a motion. There are two action items for council this evening. One, finding that the annexation petition complies with applicable state regulations, and if so, establishing an eligibility hearing date. The state does require that we establish that date between 30 and 60 days after the finding of substantial compliance. So that would be May 20th, if it is determined that the annexation petition- So that would be May 20th, if it is determined that the annexation petition is in substantial compliance. Finally, I want to be clear that the finding of substantial compliance does not constitute final action on the annexation by council, and it doesn't represent city council's position on the feasibility or desirability of the annexation. So we stated in the cover slide that these properties up the northwest and southwest corner, uh, corner of Baseline and 119th, the northern property makes up approximately 24.6 acres, and the southern property makes up approximately 52.9 acres. It is worth noting that the city has acquired, uh, a number of properties in this general area. We've acquired approximately 15.6 acres in this area in 2020. This covers the pond and then a stretch of land on the north side of Emma. We acquired about 27 acres here, which was, uh, uh, part of it was the former Lowe's development, that was done in 2007 and 2020, we take the rest. And then, of course, there's the 136 acre, uh, Wanaka Centennial Farm, of which the city bought the farm site and agricultural buildings and partnered with Boulder County Open Space on the remainder of it. All right, so this is the annexation process, it's fairly straightforward. We have the annexation petition filed, that was filed on March 5th. Here, we're at the finding of substantial compliance. And then the next step would be the annexation impact, where prepared by staff, followed by the eligibility hearing, which is a public hearing before city council, followed by Planning Commission public hearing, and then, uh, final determination by city council at an additional public hearing. At the end of this process, a property would be annexed into the city but would not be entitled. It gets to be a little bit more complicated when you start folding in all of the development applications along with it. And I'm not gonna go through each one of these cells, but the idea is that as you move through the process, you start folding in your sketch plan, your preliminary plan, and then you come out at the end of this process, not only annexed into the city, but fully entitled. Uh, this was a much longer process, and I would expect it to take, uh, over a year. And, um, uh, the other thing, the other two takeaways I do wanna make note of on here, there are multiple public hearings. You have Planning Commission public hearing for sketch plan. You have a city, uh, council-initiated call-up for the sketch plan. Same process for the preliminary plan. And then you also have multiple neighborhood meetings and, uh, intend to develop where , uh, community members can give written input. All right, moving on to the petition requirements, uh, per CRS 3112107. The applicant must allege that it is desirable and necessary that such area be annexed into the municipality. And again, that's the, the applicant needs to allege that, and we don't need to find that. An allegation that the requirements of Section 3112104 and 3112105 exist or have been met. And these are largely to do with contiguity, 1/6 contiguity requirement and, uh, community of interest. And then, uh, allegation that the signers of the petition comprise more than 50% of the landowners, and they own more than 50% of the land. And a request that the municipality approve the annexation. Uh, and then, of course, signatures of the landowners, the mailing address of each signer, the legal description of the landowner, uh, the date of signing of each signature, and an affidavit of circulator of such petition. And then finally, an annexation map taking the contiguity requirement. So, based on staff's findings, after reviewing the petition, we found that it was filed with the city on March 5th, 2025, sorry. Annexation petition is signed by more than 50% of the landowners owning more than 50% of the land. In fact, it's signed by 100% of the property owners. And the petition contains all allegations required by 3112107C, and the annexation map has been provided, and it does depict, uh, approximately three-quarters contiguity. And then all the petition signatures are dated within 180 days of the filing. Lastly, those on, uh, the applicants also requested a condition that they have the right to withdraw if certain conditions do not occur, this is the entitlements. However, this is not binding on the city, or a better way to say that is, the city is not obligated to annex the property if they, uh, were to go through this, this process. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, questions for, uh, from council? Councilor Sampson.
So it's currently land that's, um, owned in Boulder County?
Correct.
Okay. And so the only ones that meet that 1/6 rule of, uh, the statute would be us or Boulder County? Is that correct?
No, it's really, it's complicated, but the only part that's not, not contiguous would be this eastern edge of the northern property.
Okay.
Now, whether it could be, this is approximately 23% of the boundary, but it's, I don't know that what it exactly is of just this property, but it doesn't, doesn't meet the 1/6 contiguity if, going off of memory, off of what I, what I checked it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, uh, other questions? Counselor? Nope. Um, yeah, I just want to kind of just reiterate, um, for the benefit of, of folks watching at home and the public, um, you know, tonight's, uh, discussion and vote is strictly on the annexation petition, and if it meets the Colorado statutes. Uh, we are not, uh, discussing or voting on any sort of site plan. Uh, we are not, uh, we're not nearly, uh, that far in the discussion yet. Uh, tonight is, as we look, uh, you know, uh, does the application meet the requirements that the, that the state has provided for us? Um, and, uh, under the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965, and if we are, um, if, if we do feel that the application is in compliance with those statutes, then vote accordingly. And if you, if you do not, that is true, um, you know, we need to have a discussion on that. And so, that being said, um, is, uh, is there any items that council would like to bring up during this time, uh, regarding this application? If not, uh, we will take a motion, please. Um, so if, if council does feel prepared to make the motion for tonight, please do so.
I'll do it. I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-19, finding the annexation petition for properties generally located northwest and southwest of the intersection of Baseline Road and North 119th Street to be in substantial compliance, setting a public hearing on the petition, and initiating annexation proceedings for the Gateway Lafayette Annexation in accordance with the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All right, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, we will have, continue to have discussions, uh, down the road regarding this topic. Uh, I know a lot of folks are, are particularly interested in hearing about the site plan in particular, when we get to that stage in the planning process. Uh, council will have several more discussions, and happy to have, uh, a discussion on that as we, as we go through the process. All right. Great, um, well then, that brings us to item L, uh, which is, um, our first reading on ordinance number six, Series 2025, amending Article III of Chapter 65 of the Municipal Court of the Code of Ordinances. Uh, we have our fabulous judge here, Amanda Bealhesh, as well as our court administrator, uh, administrator as well. So, thank you all for, for being patient with us and, and, uh, hanging out with us this evening. Um, so, uh, we're ready when you are.
All right, good evening. Um, so I actually reached out, um, to Mary Lynn about this ordinance. Um, so our code, um, it, or I guess I should say the agenda, I'll present, we'll have questions, and then we'll have a motion. So, I wanted to address this because our code is based, uh, into two types of violations, right? You have criminal violations and civil violations. And, um, a criminal violation is jailable up to 364 days and a fine of up to $2,650, and civil violation is only finable. So I reached out to Mary Lynn, um, because I wanted to amend the code so that I can enter, or any judge that serves here, um, can enter a civil judgment, default judgment against the defendant for failing to appear in lieu of issuing a warrant for the defendant's arrest. And so that's kind of the background of what generated this request. Um, as a judge, I'm not usually in the business of legislating, um, but I think it helps make, achieve justice for defendants and make a more efficient, uh, court process. So what happens now, when a defendant feels, fails to appear in court, um, the only remedy that we have is for me to issue a warrant for the defendant's failure to appear, which is, uh, provided in Section 65-72. So, it doesn't matter what you fail to appear for, I can issue a warrant. Um, the code does specifically make me to enter default judgments on traffic violations, which I, is something that is already in practice, except for, um, certain traffic violations that have been deemed, uh, criminal, like no proof of insurance, or eluding a police officer, things like that. So this proposal allows, um, me or any other judge to enter a civil default judgment against a defendant instead of issuing a warrant if jail is not a possible penalty, uh, for the original violation, right? Because a civil violation has a, a civil consequence, which is a fine only, and it seems, I mean, it doesn't seem, a long time ago, we got rid of debtor prisons, right? And so I don't wanna be arresting people, um, for failing to appear in court for, uh, a civil violation. And it really is a, not a great use of law enforcement resources to arrest and release, arrest and release, uh, different people. So the purpose of this is to allow an appropriate consequence for failing to appear on a civil violation. Any questions?
Well, thank you, uh, for, for bringing this, um, to us tonight, and for presenting questions from council, if there are any. Councilor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the default ruling for traffic violations, didn't we have to pass an ordinance to make that?
I think that was part, I'd have to look at the code, but that's been part of the code for quite some time now.
Okay, all right. I, I think it's a great idea.
Uh, other comments or questions? Okay, uh, can we get the motion language on screen, please? And whoever feels ready.
I move to approve on first reading ordinance number six, Series 2025, amending Article III of Chapter 65 Municipal Court of the Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you for continuing all your hard work, and for bringing that to our attention, and you know, hopefully we'll have more conversations later on.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yes, you too. Okay, uh, that wraps up regular business for tonight, which, uh, brings us to our staff reports, uh, beginning with our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything to report this evening.
Awesome. All right, next up, we have our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and good evening. Um, so, the first two bullets on this slide are a lot of opportunities that opened up today that we're really excited to share. So, um, the city and the community foundation of Boulder County are excited to partner on the distribution of our One Lafayette Grant Program, as we had discussed late last year, to transfer it over to that agency. Um, the grant application opened today and will close on May 1st. And so while the community foundation will manage the process, will be promoting through our channels, and have also reached out to Pass One Lafayette recipients to, um, encourage them to apply there for these health and human services funding. Um, we have three on the, uh, tune of the Sustainability Night. Three applications that opened up, and those links take you to those applications. The first one is for air purifiers. The Sustainability Division has been partnering with the Fire Department to pilot this program to provide free air purifiers to community members, um, kind of in response to those high ozone and wildfire smoke, and priority will be given to income-qualified residents. Um, our Sustainability Director did let me know that there has been already 68 applications for this first-time pilot program, so high demand, which is awesome to see. Another high-demand program that we started a few years ago is the Lafayette E-Bike Rebate Program. Um, last year, again, there were over 120 applications for the rebate, and again, we continue to prioritize our income-qualified rates first. And then our Switch Together Program. This is, um, residents can register for this solar program. It's a group buying program that ensures participants get a, um, good deal on solar. And so you can sign up to attend the program for free, or attend the solar 101 training that will be hosted April 17th from 6:00 to 7:30. Also noted in our earlier presentation, but just as a reminder, we kick off our community engagement, um, presentations. The next one will be tomorrow. It is at City Hall. It will be recorded and put up on the website, but also available for participants to call in and ask questions. And this one will be focused on kind of the projects as a whole, so as a reminder, each meeting will be a, a different topic. Again, there's that website that we recently launched where all of the information will be hosted. And then Councilor Barnes mentioned this earlier again, but, um, really exciting to have our most recent mural being celebrated on Saturday, April 19th, from 11 to noon. Will be the celebration at the mural, and then from 2 to 3, um, the artists will do a discussion over at the collective. Please join if you can. Some items coming up at your next April 15th meeting, we will be doing a presentation from our Latino Chamber, uh, partnership with the city of Lafayette. Also, we'll be doing an IGA with the, and the Downtown Development Authority, like we reviewed at your last workshop. We will be doing as kind of an annual process, a update to our model, traffic code update, and then ordinance for our first supplemental of the year, which will address items from 2024 that need to be carried over, largely capital project-based, and any, um, supplemental items that have come up since the beginning of the year. At your April 22nd workshop, we'll be doing kind of our annual water supply and project update, kind of figuring out where we're headed into, um, as the winter season is wrapped up and the summer season, depending on the weekend, seems to kick in. And then also a discussion on your 2025 work plan update. That's all I have tonight, thank you, Mayor.
And, and that workshop, just, that's the 22nd, right? Because it's a five Tuesday month?
That is, yeah, that is, thank you for clarifying. That is the fourth Tuesday, which is what our workshops are being held on. The rare few months that we have five.
Great. Uh, so we will wrap up tonight with council reports. Uh, Councilor Tapia Vega, do you want to start us?
Uh, no reports.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Freeman?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
All right, Councilor Sampson?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Mayor Portemonge?
Um, just a quick statement. I know that Dr. Cog was last week, and we had one of our residents, Ron Spalding, who went and actually spoke to Dr. Cog down in Denver. Um, and from that meeting, there is some conversation among the communities to potentially, um, form a group to work to lobby and educate state legislatures on home rule and the importance of it for all communities. So, that may be going forward. The other thing I just wanna, um, make a quick comment on is House Bill 1315. This is a bill that's currently started in the House, um, it has bipartisan support. And what the bill does is it brings forward a method in which vacancies in the state legislature will sit no more than one year and be swept up in the next election. So we will no longer have full appointments at, finish the remainder of a state lawmaker's term should they decide to leave the legislature. So, um, this will be no more than a year appointment, then they'll have to run for reelection. So, that currently is starting in the House. And I just wanted to make a quick note, just because, as I've stated before, Lafayette unfortunately has had two instances in which our legislatures, um, were either removed from office or resigned from office during the peak representation season, and we did not have that representation. So certainly encourage, um, people to take a look at that. I know I'll do some further digging, but I think that's important for us to continue our representation, especially during, um, the peak legislative session.
And what is that bill number?
1315.
Great.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Gallados?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to mention that the state of California recognizes Caesar Chavez Day, which was yesterday, March 31st. And for those who don't know, um, Caesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta are important members of the, of our community over time, as they supported a lot of, uh, farmworkers and created the United Farm Workers Union. And I know we don't celebrate it in Colorado, but, uh, it, I think it's important. And because this was just National Women's History Month, Dolores Huerta, who I, I'm reminded by my wife all the time that she's not mentioned with Caesar Chavez, but they started it together. And if you've ever heard, uh, the expression, "Si se puede," that came from Dolores, Dolores Huerta, she will be, uh, 90, 95 years old, uh, on April 10th. So just like to recognize that those two have done a, uh, an amazing, uh, support of our community, um, through union organizing for, uh, farmworkers, most Latino, uh, farmworkers.
I believe she visited here before, Dolores Huerta?
Yes, she's been here, yes. Um, and I'd also like to mention, if anyone heard about the dissolving of the NAACP chapter of Boulder County last week, uh, I'd just like to point out that it's important to recognize change is inevitable. The NAACP, or National Association for the Advancement of Color People, was founded on April 12th of 1909 in New York City by a group of black and white activists in response to racial violence, particularly in the Springfield Race Riot of 1908. Its mission, the NAACP's mission, is to fight for civil rights and eliminate racial discrimination in various aspects of society. Its mission is to fight for, uh, yeah, I just said that. Um, and there are still chapters of the NAACP out, out west here. The, uh, closest one would be, if I get this right, the NAACP Rocky Mountain State Conference representing- representing Colorado, Montana, and Wyoming. There's also a chapter in Aurora, two chapters in Aurora, Cheyenne, Wyoming, Color Springs, Denver, Douglas County, and Pueblo. And with that said, there, at the collective, one of our local artists, Savely Grant Lord, is going to appear at the collective with her show and the Cultural Caravan, if you've ever heard that group play. They're amazing and have a talk back, and that starts at 7:00 PM at the collective. And would also like to mention the switch for, switch for Colorado, or switch to solar. I think that's really important that that, that we're bringing that forward, because I talked to a lot of people who said there's not a lot of guidance on what to do for solar panels, and it's sometimes confusing, so I'm glad that we stepped up and provided a way to help people understand like what, what it is you need to get into the solar panel or solar energy use area. And last, I would like to mention that the Northern Water Tour, I did sign up to take, because it's the only time I had available, the east-to-west slope tour. That's on August 26th. I don't know if anybody else is going, but I'll be going in August. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. A few items for me before we get into the executive session. First of all, I did have an opportunity to chat with each member of council regarding minimum, the minimum wage discussions, and it looks like Counselor Barnes, we do have unanimous support to engage in the fishbowl, but we, and I did get a chance to speak with Mayor Peck in Longmont as well, and there, they've kind of opened up the invitation to not just, you know, having one person from Lafayette attending, but if, you know, if we wanted to invite the director of our chamber, or someone, a member of the community, or a member of council, or staff, or whoever, maybe, they're, they're very flexible to who can participate. And so I did let them know that we would probably be sending over a few folks, and I did already reach out to the chamber director, and she said she's interested. So if you all know of any other folks, maybe from the perspective of the labor side that wants to get involved in this conversation as well, I think that'd be nice. Or if you want to have someone else from, from the business community as well, you know, I think a good balance would be appropriate. And it's, no decision will be made in that exercise. It is, and feel free to clarify anything, but it's more so informative, it's sharing information. The City of Lafayette and the City of Longmont, you know, share similar demographics, although they are larger than us. I do see a lot of similarities between our communities. And so that, have they, they haven't nailed down a date yet for that, have they?
No.
Not yet. And I believe our city manager was going to be in touch, or already has been in touch with the Longmont city manager?
An email has been sent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think our city managers will be in discussion on that, to kind of figure out what the right makeup of the group will look like, as well as the timing of it, and once that discussion takes place, kind of depending on how that goes, then we will have a better timeline on how soon we discuss that issue as a city. Yes.
And one note, I did hear from a counselor for the City of La, what's it called, Erie, and they, they are interested that it's happening and may just be in the audience, potentially, to just take note of what happens in the fishbowl. Information gathering.
Great. Great, thank you. Our next update is on the Sister City Initiative that I've been working on. Some, some exciting news. We did get another interested city. It is located in Peru, Iquitos, Peru, a city that borders the Amazon, and the reason why I was able to get connected with this city in particular is because we do have a local nonprofit here in Lafayette called One Voice for Change, who does a lot of STEM work with their student population out there, sending supplies and lesson plans and things like that to work with their student body, and I had the opportunity to video chat with the mayor and they, and his staff. And so they, they are also interested in that relationship, and so the next steps with them would be, as, as I mentioned in my presentation a few months ago, they're going to compose a letter of interest. They'll send that letter of interest to us, and then we'll take a look at it here. I'll probably take a look at it with, with city staff, figure out, you know, how to respond, what works, what doesn't work, and then eventually, before anything is formalized, council will definitely have input, a conversation, just on that. So right now, we do have two communities, one in Peru and one in El Salvador, that are interested. However, because these are international conversations we're having, communication has, you know, is, is, is a bit slow, but we're continuing to open up these conversations. But I think, you know, I want to settle down with these two opportunities, explore them some more before we, we, we look at anything further and get those letters of interest in, and then I'll be able to present council with a lot more information and details on what that relationship will look like. But two committed nonprofits that are willing to take, you know, the administrative burden from the city and do the primary communication with the, with the other, with our, with our sister cities as well. So more on that to come. Please reach out to me directly if you have any questions on that, but things are moving along. Finally, Art Night Out. I believe our council will continue our, our newer tradition of doing chat with council at the Art Night Out events. So we will have a tent, a booth at Art Night Out, where any members of the public can come up to us, ask us questions directly, and we'll be there kind of on the main road, so feel free to pop in. I believe the first Art Night Out is, when is that, that's coming up, right?
It is May 8th.
May 9th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so the real, other reason I brought this up is because I wanted to make sure that we were in touch with our communication director, Will Mont, to make sure that we get signed up for that. I know it's a little bit out, but I just want to make sure folks got that on their calendars now, so that we can sign up for some slots, to make sure there's a counselor, at least one counselor there the entire time. Cool. All right. All right, well, that's all from me. And I do have a few, I do have three motions I need to make for the executive session, so if you all could bear with me for those votes, that would be great. Beginning with the first motion, this is, I'm to adjourn to executive session pursuant to section 24-67424B of the Colorado statute, to confer with the city attorney for purposes of receiving leg rights on specific legal questions regarding state preemption and the city's home rule authority to regulate zoning and land use. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Next. I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections 24-67424E1 of the Colorado statute, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiating, instructing negotiators regarding intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lafayette, Town of Erie, and the Town of Erie Urban Regula Authority dated June 4th, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. And I also move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections 24-67424A and 24-67424E1 of the Colorado statute, to consider the potential acquisition of a parcel, or parcels of the, of real property located on North Public Road in Old Town, Lafayette, Colorado, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding the potential acquisition of such property. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. The City Council will adjourn to executive sessions and will now return in an open meeting. The time is now 7:05 PM. Thank you.